This meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM Tuesday, August 15, 2017, in room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting ex officio member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barlow?
Here.
Mrs. Beckett?
Ms. Marvin?
Here.
Mr. Schlesner?
Here.
Ms. Selinger?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Chair Workman?
Here.
Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. 2.01, Approval of the Agenda Item. This is an action item, Mr. Munoz. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, the following changes to the agenda. Item 3.03, Immunization Update has been added, and Item 7.03, Approval of the 2017-18 Rights, Rules and Regs and Procedure Code has been removed.
Move approval. All those in favor, please say aye. Pause. Motion carries. Announcements and Communications. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, I'm extremely excited to that we have a couple guests here, and I think I provided a little information to you in one of my weekly updates, that this is a program that received not only local, but state, but national recognition. So I'm excited to invite Liz and Joanne up here to talk to us about the Green Thumb Initiative.
Thank you for having us. The program idea came from my master's study that I got to work on with Dean and working at the alternative high school. I wanted to offer a truly alternative way to approach learning and applying knowledge that kids have been working on throughout their whole school career. And I've worked with demographic of kids that don't usually find a lack of academic success. So we wanted to take things that they are good at and show them that they can be successful in things that they're already doing and show them that they really are very knowledgeable and they just are applying it the ways that we have found them and ways that we're allowing them to apply it. So allowing them to see themselves as successful learners through the garden. And my co-founder, Katie Sloan, has elementary educational background, so she was very good at combining curriculums and different subjects and report topics to be able to make that work seamlessly together. So it's a joint effort between the two of us, and really none of it could be possible without our support and joint ship.
So I'm in Public Health, and we have some funding groups here with the foundation that has funded actually nine gardens in the district, as well as others around the county. This is the largest one, and it really is, it's a great model, it's a great example. We've done so much to make the garden part of multiple subjects within the school. So because it really is a model, Blue Cross and Blue Shield have funded where they really wanted to tell stories that are successful around the state and to kind of move the needle for kids to eat better. And so this was one example, and they were able to fund that to help us create a video to tell the story. So we'll be using it to tell the story as for the school, as will Blue Cross and Blue Shield. So it's already, it has several viewings up and coming at state offices.
Here we are in the Green Thumb Initiative Garden at the Rochester Alternative Learning Center, where they are growing fresh, healthy produce, as well as healthy, engaged students. Research tells us that when youth are involved in growing their own produce, they are more likely to eat it. And so this garden is also helping them build healthy habits. But this garden is so much more. It's helping them apply concepts from math, science, reading. It's helping them build job skills and community connections that will help the students learn and thrive. We met with several medical and academic professionals, as well as the students, to get their thoughts on how this garden is contributing to the school. Let's listen to see what they have to say.
In the United States, we have 17% of adolescents that are currently overweight and obese. There is a connection between hunger and obesity. Schools are a great place to work on prevention of obesity and treatment of obesity, because our students spend a lot of time of their days, and they eat and they move in those environments. The work on eating healthier and moving more at a school level is fun, is energizing. It gives you not only the benefits of, you know, of health, which are so important in terms of preventing the complications from obesity, but also are very important in increasing self-esteem, increasing confidence, increasing that sense of community of we have done something together. Schools are part of the solution.
Their food choices have just have grown exponentially. I mean, they still, they still are kids, and they still eat what they eat. But this last fall, when we had food to harvest, we did a ton of cooking. They made ratatouille, and it was zucchini, eggplant, tomatoes, basil, just a whole bunch of garden things. If I would have put that in front of them, they wouldn't have touched it. But because they had a hand in planting it, growing it, watering it, caring for it, watching those vegetables just grow bigger and bigger, and then no one to pick them, fresh off the vine, they ate every bit of it. There was nothing left over.
We always have an idea of what curriculum pieces we want the kids to be learning, whether it's something in English or something in chemistry, but we apply it in a way and structured around what's going on in the garden. So we might talk about the chemistry of culinary arts and food preparation. So they just think they're doing something fun, that they enjoy, that they're already good at, and then we can start using some of that academic language with them and showing them how having this base of chemistry knowledge is how they're applying it. If you try to give them a math problem on a piece of paper, they're immediately just, "I can't do it." But if you don't say anything to them, and you say, "I need you to build this garden bad," and they do it, and they figure out all these dimensions, and you're like, "Hey, that is area and perimeter." They're like, "No, I can't do that." I'm like, "But you did it."
And so the Green Thumb Initiative was born out of the idea of offering opportunities to our special ed students to earn actual, real credit that they can apply towards graduation.
I do a research project with the students that they have to pick a vegetable, and they do it through, and they have to tell me its life cycle, from a seed, to planting, to germinating, to harvesting, back to seed. We have a lot of students that now garden at home that didn't before. We want to get a lot of the produce that's in our garden that the kids are raising and growing back to the families within this building for sure, and the community we have here, basically to get this produce back into the hands of our local community. We raise pheasants every year. I'm going to raise some ducks for the first time this spring. I'm going to have the kids doing that as part of a biology class and project. And we'll study everything through from, we're going to do part of them as chicks and part of them as eggs and incubates, so we'll go through that whole stage.
The garden is an extension of the classroom. We really enjoy when we can take those skills they're learning in the garden. Well, those are skills, those are entrepreneurship skills, food production or food prep, working with restaurants or other places, the things that will make them be successful, whatever they do, hard work, working with other people. The garden allows us to simulate those environments and transfer them out into the community.
This was the first year that we had really gotten involved with ALC and being able to see what they'd grown and take the food that they had done and make a dish with it. Went to the school, and we spent a half an hour making a different dish, showing them how to make different things, cut vegetables, prep vegetables. And we ended up with some squash, zucchini, jalapenos, some different peppers that we were able to just play around with, do different dishes with, and kind of show the versatility of the dish. But it was food that they had grown that we then were able to turn into something that people wanted to eat and purchase. And that made it fun. I think they got excited about that, as well as we were excited about it, because you're seeing these kids that are saying, "We grew this. Now we're taking it to the next level." The other benefit is that staff that I'm interviewing or that I wish to hire, it's nice to know that they have a prior knowledge of food, they have a prior knowledge of how the quality of the product is, and they're able to understand that when they come in, this is a physical job.
It really isn't the garden, you know, growing things and all the positive things that come from that, but it's really about giving students an opportunity to connect with school and to connect with a caring adult. I think that's the major outcome that we have seen from this project at our school. And I think that that has exceeded our expectations.
A lot better than like being in a regular classroom, because in a regular classroom, you're just sitting on the table and listening to the person talk. When in GTI, you're always outside, you're always doing something, you're always moving around and getting your work out and learning.
You're always doing something, you're always moving, you're always being active, you're always outside, and you're always just doing something in community.
You make a lot of memories, you laugh a lot, you're always having a good time, you know? And sometimes people are just like, "You're not learning in it." But you really are learning new experiences on how to cook, how to garden, and how to just work together.
When you have like all these different kids coming in and with a bunch of different talents and abilities that they can do, you bring them all together, and it just, you can create something really cool.
So as you can see, a school garden can provide access to healthy food and healthy engaged students and so much more. So plant a garden, see what takes root.
Yeah, and I do really appreciate being part of a district that allows us the opportunity to take risks and chances and do these sorts of things and provide opportunities for students.
Can we get this on Board Docs, this video? Would that be possible? Or on the website?
Yeah, can we put it on our website?
I didn't see it on Board Docs, but.
Okay, let me just say, Liz, you were a proponent of project-based learning before it was really a thing. I mean, you just knew that. And it's you and people like you who understand that for so many kids, literally, hands-on is how they learn and how they connect to the community. So I just, I can't applaud enough the work you've done, the vision you have, and the person you are.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. And this, again, is a fine example of the many great partnerships that we have in the district, and it wouldn't be possible without you and other partners. And unfortunately, I was out of town when the chefs had their challenge. I missed that. I was really disappointed in that. But thank you for your partnership and for the great work, and for you for taking outside the box and doing whatever it takes to engage kids. And this is truly what those kids need to be engaged.
Also, if you need additional space next spring, I have a yard. And if you could bring the chef with you too, that'd be, that'd be good. Okay, just keep that in mind.
I'll suck it.
Can we see the video that's on the education channel? Just run it on there, maybe loop it on there a day or so.
Yeah, we'll do that.
People, whether you actually see it, you might actually stop by and watch it.
3.02, School Board Committee Assignment Updates. Does anybody have anything to report?
Well.
Mr. Barlow?
Chair Workman, thank you. A couple things. One, two weeks or so ago, Cabinet Member Amy Icke and I had the opportunity to attend the Parent Forum at the Somali Rebuild Organization on a Saturday afternoon. And it was just a great opportunity to engage parents and then to actually speak directly to numerous individuals and to make them more aware of the multitude of services and opportunity that are housed within Rochester Public Schools. I did want to say to the superintendent that Amy has done a wonderful job being a member of your cabinet. I didn't get a chance to tell you that, but you really did a great job. And then beyond that, had the opportunity, along with Director Workman and Marvin, to attend the summer seminar up in the cities this past Sunday and Monday, and a week ago. And just a wonderful opportunity. For me, it was almost like back-to-school week, you know, just networking. But more than that, the various workshops that were provided, one of them, I see the byproduct of, and I thank Director Workman and Marvin for following through the conversation that we had, and I'm just excited about this new school year and all the great things that are going to happen.
Are you going to talk about that?
You can go next.
Okay. Well, one of the things, you're going to talk about the dashboard. Okay. Good. And about the things that are in the back of the nameplates.
Sure.
We need to rehearse before. One of the breakout sessions, I was particularly taken with, many of them were dealt with equity. This one in particular, though, the keynote speaker was saying, "Usually when we talk about kids and their potential, it's prefaced by they're not living up to their potential." But she called out an interesting idea, I think, is that kids in school feel good about what they're doing, they're achieving their potential when, and I think the example of these kids at the ALC show this, when they feel like they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, that they are achieving their potential, that the work they're doing is important, and that they are making a difference. You know, we've been looking, studying recently our test scores statewide, why we've been doing that, and that's important. And we always continue to examine how we can help our kids do better. But as this speaker pointed out, test scores aren't everything. And if we've got kids in school who feel that what they're doing is important, that school is a place they need to be, and that they're making a difference, even if their test scores may not be stunning, they still, I think, are really using their potential. And we can hope for good things for them beyond maybe the test scores that an individual kid may not be achieving. But I think we have to keep it in perspective. It's certainly not an excuse for scores that may not be what we expect, but I think that kids are a lot more than just a score on a test.
One of the sessions I went to was on equity, and I shared this with the superintendent and director, Marvin, yesterday morning when we, when our executive committee met. And the dashboard is simply, basically, a kind of a spreadsheet that has a number of different characteristics of the student groups that we're looking at. And in this particular example, they included administration, leadership team, licensed staff, students, and then they included MCA scores. And then for behavior, they also included a percentage of students who had referrals and their attendance. Outside of school, one or more athletic activities, fine arts participation, school clubs organization, and one or more concurrent enrollment or AP courses. And that's all broken down in the larger column by male, female, male, black, Asian, Pacific Islander, Hispanic, American, Indian, white, special education, English language learners, free and reduced lunch, and gifted. We wouldn't have to use all of those specific categories and certainly are not being restricted by them either. But the district already has this information in a lot of different places. But having it on this kind of a spreadsheet that's really easy to read, I can understand it, and if I can understand it, anybody can, I think will be really helpful to the public to see exactly where we are standing in any particular moment in time with our different student groups. And it will help us to really focus on maybe some of the areas that need to be addressed in more depth or more frequently. So, and then on the back of our nameplates here, just a little bit of a reminder for when we're looking at our policies, and this is through the.
So they can see it. Just, I mean, so they see some things there.
Yeah. Okay. Through the equity lens, four questions to keep in mind. Who benefits from this policy? Who is disadvantaged by this policy? What assumptions are we making? And whose voices are we missing? So I'm really looking forward to this as just being a reminder tool to really keep us focused on our students and the equity work that we're going to be really involved in in this next school year.
Okay, just a couple updates. We had a busy week last week. Tuesday, we had a full day. We had Leadership, it was about 80 individuals, and spent the entire day together working on a variety of things. And interesting, we talked about this yesterday morning, when you brought those four ideas, that was a conversation we had at Leadership. And tonight must be Amy's night, because I also used an example that morning that, you know, whenever we have discussions in cabinet meetings, it's always important to have an individual to always remind us that decisions that we're making, to look at it through an equity lens. And I shared with Leadership that Amy's, we can always count on Amy to always bring this, remind us that if we're not having that conversation, she brings it to the table. And I challenged the Leadership that you need to have somebody on your team that does that for you at the building level, and making sure that the decisions and policies and procedures you're putting in place in your building, that you look at it that way. So it was interesting that we had that conversation, because that's the same thing we had on Tuesday last week. And then Wednesday and Thursday, we spent the entire, both days at John Adams, and each school and departments had a team there, and it was our data retreat. And they spent the two days looking at their data and coming up with action plans. And this year, we made a little bit of a change to that and required them to have at least one behavior goal. So they had to look at their discipline data and come up with their behavior goal and actions that they're going to follow, and how they're going to measure that, and then an academic goal. So I was really impressed. I spent both full days there observing and answering questions, and it was great to see all of the schools were up their sleeves and put that work forward to create their plans, basically their school improvement plans for the coming school year. The other thing that I would like to talk a little bit about is we are really getting ramped up for the communication audit that we have here in September, and been working with the consultants that will be out spending a couple days in our district, leading focus groups for that work. And so we are looking for names of parents, business leaders, nonprofits, senior citizens, empty nesters, or people who you hear from frequently. If you have any names, if you could send them to Heather. And the consultants have, we've broken down the different groups that they recommend, and what we've decided is that for every group, we're going to solicit names, and then the other half of the names, we're going to do a random draw. And so we can't be accused of stacking the deck. But if you have anybody that you can think of that would fit in any of those categories, if you could send that name to Heather, and preferably contact information, because we know we have to get more people than we need, because not everybody will accept the invitation to participate in that. So if you have anybody, a parent, a business leader, a nonprofit, senior citizen, empty nester, or people who you frequently hear from, either positively or negatively, if you could provide those names to Heather, we would greatly appreciate that.
Do you have any dates for when those?
Yes, it's September 18th and 19th. They will be in the district. And then they told us, I think, four to six weeks before, four to six days, 10 weeks, before they'll have their report complete. And then we will bring them back to the board to present their findings to the board after that work. So if you have any names, submit them to Heather.
Any other school board? Ms. Selinger?
Thanks. Just another reminder, tomorrow night, Commissioner Casillas will be in town to talk about ESSA, Community Update. ESSA is the new NCLB, and Superintendent will be there to introduce her, but it's a way to learn about the new plans and anything that's changed, and then also have your voice heard about anything you hear there. And so they are making a statewide tour, and one of their stops is here in Rochester, so I encourage you all to get out. You can also submit comments to the Minnesota Department of Education online. One other thing, if you don't mind.
You know who?
I'm sorry?
John Marshall.
John Marshall, thank you. John Marshall from 6:00 to 7:30. Hope to see you there. One other thing I would like to advertise, taking a point of personal privilege, if I may, my son has been working on an internship over the summer at the History Center, and as his final project, he got to do a display, and he chose, I don't know why, History of the School District. It's a very small display, I will say, but nonetheless, I'm very proud. I went over to see it today. Some great old pictures of the Northrop Building, the Northrop Building after the tornado, the new Northrop Building, some, an old teacher contract, some other memorabilia, small but mighty. And so I invite you to check that out if you are near the History Center. It will be up for quite some time, I believe, but just was proud of my son, so I thought I'd plug that. But also, check out some school district artifacts right here in our neighborhood.
Mr. Munoz?
Something is going on here. Just today, a cabinet, Carl's been sorting through stuff in the storeroom that's behind this wall, and he brought out a book, it's a really thick book, of something from 1960-something, from the, 1945, from the district, and history of the district, and budget, what the budget was back then. And so, yeah, we're finding all kinds of historic, he should have stopped by. We had all kinds of historical items for him.
Just to add on, pile on on this, I believe there are file cabinet drawers full of old school board minute notes by law in this room over here. And it's really interesting to look at the handwritten notes that were made by the Mayo Brothers, because they were also school board members, or at least one of them was. So yes, we have a very rich history in this district, and it's quite an honor to be a part of that. All right. Anybody else? Okay.
3.03, Immunization Update. This is an information item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, this is information that we've been pushing out quite regularly here lately, and I had the opportunity to talk about this on TV and my most recent radio talk show. I don't know if I call it a talk show or not. They can call in and talk to me if they want to, so I guess it's a talk show. But a little bit of a change from the past. We are going to be really strict on, we need to have the students immunization or their exemption, or they don't get to start school on the first day at school. And we really have worked extremely hard to get that message out. We've used Skyword email notification, we've sent letters, we've made personal contacts only to families that we still need their information. We're informing them on September 5th, if they do not have either their immunization or their exclusion exemption notarized, they will not be able to attend school. And in kindergarten, it will be September 7th. And then for new students who have come from another district, they have until October, because they allow for time for, a lot of times, when they enroll in our district, we send a request to the previous district for their records, and it takes a little time for their records to get to us. So they do have 30 days, so they will have until October 5th. This has been, I just talked earlier about partnerships, this has been a great partnership. We've had several meetings with representatives from Mayo Clinic, Homestead Medical Center, and Homestead Public Health, and talked about what we can, what can we do to make it easier for families to get these immunizations done. And we explained to them that a lot of our families work, and they can't get into the clinic during the day because they can't leave work. So both Mayo Clinic and Homestead Public Health have agreed to have extended hours, and we posted those on our website and have communicated that information to our families so they're aware of where they can go, and provided a phone number so they can call and set up an appointment. As of today... As of today, we have five hundred and eighteen students out of almost eighteen thousand students that we are still communicating with. A hundred and ninety-three of those are incoming kindergarten students and two hundred and fifty-four are seventh grade students. Going into seventh grade, you have to take another set of shots, so that's why that number's a little bit higher. And first through sixth grade, there's only thirty students and eighth through twelfth, there's forty-one students. So now that our bilinguals are back on contract time, we are using their services, making personal contacts to those individuals where English may not be their number one language. But I do want to make it perfectly clear that it's, the demographics of that five hundred and eighteen goes across the board. It's not a particular group. But we do know sometimes we communicate, we know we have to communicate in different languages. So we believe that we're doing quite a bit to make parents aware of the requirement. And we'll continue working with families to get this taken care of so we do not have to exclude anybody on the first day of school. But we, just like we drew a line in the sand last year, we are doing it again this time, but this time it's the first day of school.
Mr. Smith.
Would you like to, first day of school, people show up and you don't have, are we going to have, is there a way they'll be able to get immunized? I have, not know where they can go, someplace and get that done right then and there if that's their opportunity yet?
No, we, one of the things, because we, one of the things we even talked about trying to host, I guess called clinic in this room. But they said because of the variety of different types of immunizations that kids would have to take, they couldn't get them, bring them all here to one location.
They'll be open that day?
They'll be open during that day and we will keep the students in the office and contact their parents to have them pick them up and we'll do everything we can to help them get an appointment so they can get that taken care of.
It's better that we're doing first day of this year instead of last. That's a big improvement, change right there, change improvement. So I would expect that it'll resolve itself just like it did last year, but at a better time of year.
Yeah. Well, and not only are we having extended hours, we're providing pediatricians and anywhere where families would have contact with medical people or others, we're providing information to them about this. So I anticipate that number going down as we continue moving forward. And just like back last year, we started out with a high number and within a couple of weeks, it got down really small.
Yeah, three hundred would probably happen the day before school.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for such a thorough report. And it's really great to see how our, how the Mayo Clinic and Homestead Clinic and the public health have really, really come, stepped forward to help us out with this. And they certainly realize the importance of all of our students being immunized. So this is, this is great. So hopefully on the first day of school, then you'll be able to tell us that all students came and nobody had to be turned away. So that's the goal.
That's the plan.
Great, thank you.
Consent agenda. This is an action item. Are there any items board members wish to have removed for separate consideration?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Five point oh one, equity update. This is an information item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, tonight I would just kind of like to share with you the equity training that's going to be available to our staff. And we call it our back to school week in August. And for those in the audience, we have a really nice little brochure and I think you all had one placed in your mailbox. And it's also on our website and in board docs. So I'm not going to talk about everything we're doing, but I just want to hit some of the highlights. We changed our back to school week a little bit. We're no longer having the big welcome back where the superintendent talks. And last year, we had Manny Scott come in as a keynote. We decided to use those two days that we have in that week to really provide the equity training and other training that we need to provide for our staff. So I actually, Kurt is going to help me tomorrow. We're going to do really a short video as a welcome that they can play on Monday when they have their staff day. And then Tuesday and Wednesday will be full days of professional development. And the way it's set up is they sign up for a half a day block. So they can do one for in the morning and a different session in the afternoon and do the same thing on the next day. Just some of the ones that really pertain to the equity work that we're doing. You've heard us talk about envoy, envoy. We, our elementary and middle school teachers who have not been trained in envoy, they're required to do envoy both days. So they're, they're stuck doing that for the two full days.
They have the opportunity to do that.
Yes, it's a great opportunity for them. But I'll make it clear though, one of the, the district PD day that we have later in the year, we're providing many of these options so they can take them during that time so they don't miss out on those opportunities. Not your mascot, excuse me, if you remember Guthrie and.
Tucker.
Yeah, Tucker. Some of you were able to attend that presentation, so they are presenting that both days. We have culturally responsive classrooms. We have WICHER strategies which are part of the AVID, AVID program. We have creativity and calm, using arts to support students with trauma and stress, poverty in the classroom, Paper Tigers, which is, it's a, follows a life, an alternative high school student that changed its approach to disciplining students. What You Need to Know About Envoy session, Trauma Informed Schools, and that's, Gage Staff will be going through that. And then we have Trauma and Attachment sessions. Sam Simmons, he was a speaker that came and did a full day presentation on historical trauma for the community. We have him coming on Wednesday. Power of Belief in Students, which participants will explore, common negative beliefs about low income students and black and brown students. We have, let me see here, Trauma and Attachment, I think I might have mentioned that way, Culturally and Logistically Responsive Teaching and Learning, Behavior Prevention and De-escalation. That's targeted more towards paraprofessionals. And then Trauma Sensitive Classroom. So, and then something interesting that we also have, it's called The Coach's Box, A Guide to Coaching a Trauma Sensitive Sports Program. And there's a part one and part two. So we are encouraging our athletic coaches to take that training. I don't know if any of you know Andre Crockett. He is one of the individuals that will be providing that training on that. So those are just the different, there's many other sessions, but those are ones that really connect to the equity work that we are doing. And then remember at our last board meeting, we converted the half, four half days into four full days so we could provide more opportunities for professional development. We believe at the end of the school year, we will have all of our teachers have K through eight, we'll have the envoy training. Paraprofessionals, K through eight, will go through, maybe not the full fledged envoy training, but they'll get envoy training. And all staff, all teachers will get to work with Dr. Hawley on culturally responsive classrooms. Two parts, first part is just the basic information and then when he comes back the second time, it gives them more specific strategies that they can use in the classroom. So end of the year, because of the board allowing us to make an adjustment in the calendar, we're going to be able to get all of our fifteen hundred plus teachers, plus many of our paraprofessionals trained in the different equity work that we're doing at the district level. I think that's it. I will address, this doesn't talk equity, but there was some questions about why we selected the days we did. We felt that we already had it in the calendar for half days. It would be easier for parents to find childcare for a full day than a half day. So that's why we elected to do the full days on our already scheduled half days. And a year ago, if you remember, we switched days that we had, or I think they used to be Wednesday. We stay away from Mondays and Fridays. If we look at our data, those are days that we are high in need of subs teachers. So we know Mondays and Fridays aren't good to do professional development. And even though I know parents said, well, I wish you would do a Friday so it would have a longer weekend, but because of the data we looked at, we didn't select Fridays. And then we went from Wednesdays to Thursdays, the teacher, and that came from recommendations through, compared through the teachers that they felt, Thursday's works better for that versus a Wednesday. So that's why we made that switch to Thursdays. I'm done now.
Chair Workman?
Yes.
Just a question to the superintendent. Are we, as board members, if we have the time and or saw something along the lines of professional development during the back to school week or during the course of the year, able to draw?
Yeah, you're welcome to pop into any sessions. You have a book, so you can, we won't make you go into PD Express and sign up. You can just show up to anyone you want to go to.
Thank you. Any other questions? Great. Thank you very much. Five point oh two, Approval to Pay, Inside Out Foundation Invoice, dated July one, 2017. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, and this is a briefing item, but I would request that when we get down here, that the board move it to action. I know they would greatly appreciate it. If you remember, last year, in last year's budget, you asked us to put that dollar amount into the budget to continue the Inside Out program in our district. So we did that. And it's, yes, it's already in the budget that you approved, but since it is over the hundred thousand dollar mark, we do have to bring it to you to formally get approved. But it's nothing new than what you approved a year ago. But since it reached that over a hundred thousand, we do have to get a separate approval on that.
Move to action.
Second.
Is there any discussion about moving this item to action? Hearing none. All those in favor moving this item to action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is now an action item. Be it resolved that the school board of Independent School District five thirty-five does hereby approve the payment of the invoice submitted by the Inside Out Foundation for the amount of one hundred twenty-nine thousand four hundred dollars. Any discussion? All those.
Great program.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seven point oh one, Student Behavior Handbook. This is an information item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, I'm going to pass up the handbook. And I'm not going to go through everything, just hit the highlights for you. And first of all, I want to, there's many people who contributed to this document and it was a lot of work, not only by cabinet level staff, but I shared with you a time back that we worked with leadership on this document as well. We worked with our attorney and also with the Office of Civil Rights to try to come up with a handbook that would address the requirements in the OCR agreement. I do want to let you know that we have created a PowerPoint presentation to, because one of the requirements is we have to train the staff and students and parents on the handbook, discipline handbook. So we have created a PowerPoint presentation for the administrators to use on that Monday with their staff. We will work, create something for the students. And then we will host a couple of community meetings to invite the community to come in and we'll go over the highlights of the handbook with them and take their feedback at that time. I'd like to call your attention to page seven. If you remember, we used to have this majors and minors. We've gotten rid of that terminology and basically level ones have taken the place of minors. Level ones, level one by, level one violation is to be handled by the classroom teacher. And one of the things that we, we put two expectations by the teacher, which are there on the little box there on page seven. We expect the teachers to reteach the positive expectation to the student and have that individual conference with the student to discuss the behavior that they need to address. And then if you notice, there's a list of several things that fit under the category of level one offenses. This list is much smaller than what the older list used to be. And one of the concerns that OCR had was that we had too many vague statements that could be taken a variety of different ways. So we really narrowed down the types of violations. And then later on, I will reference in the back of the document, real good, clear definition of what these different violations are. So there's a really good understanding. So if horse play or play fighting is the same thing in every building, it's not called horse play in one building and something else in another building. Okay, there on page eight, as I mentioned, level one offenses are intended to be addressed by the classroom teacher. And level one infractions will be designed to address student behavior without removing the student from the classroom. That's the intent of level one behaviors. However, we do know there are times where a level one behavior may rise to the occasion of a level two behavior, which would result in an office referral. And there's different examples of when that could happen. If it's a repeated level one offense, student's done it eight to ten times in a short period of time, maybe that conversation the teacher's having and the intervention they've tried in the classroom is not working, so maybe they have to go to the office to try a different intervention. Another example would be if a level one offense that involved a level two behavior. For example, misuse of technology is a level one offense. But if you're using technology to, for cyber bullying or harassment, or a different level two offense, then that would make it become a level two offense. And then there are some special circumstances that would allow staff to make it a level two offense. Student's presence would result in a risk of harm to a person or property or significantly disrupt the educational environment of the classroom, then that could rise to a level two behavior, which would be an office referral. On page nine, we have the level two offenses. And you see there are several of them on page nine and ten. Once again, if you compared this list to last year's list, this list would be much smaller as well. And if you notice in the box there on page ten, responses, once again, the administrator needs to reteach the positive expectation, have that individual student conference. And then one step further is they have to communicate to the parent or guardian at home. So then you see the list of different infractions that could be a level two. And then on page eleven are some of, and ten are some of the responses that administration can use to address those level two behaviors. Then on page eleven, there's a little bit of information about special education and five oh four evaluations. And then number two there on page eleven, we talk about our in-school suspension. And then I'll call your attention to page thirteen, which starts talking about out-of-school suspension. And there are really only three behavior categories that would warrant an automatic out-of-school suspension. And those are possession or distribution of drugs or alcohol, possession of a weapon, or a level two offense resulting in bodily or emotional harm. So those are the three categories that would warrant an out-of-school suspension. However, if a different offense occurs and the administration feels that it warrants a suspension, they have to contact Jackie and have a conversation about that before a decision is made to give a student a suspension for something that isn't one of those three categories. Page fourteen talks about expulsions. There are basically three categories that warrant expulsion, willful violation of any school board regulation, willful conduct that significantly disrupts the rights of others to an education, or the ability of the school personnel to perform their duties or school-sponsored extracurricular activities, willful conduct that endangers the student or other students or surrounding persons, including school, district employees, or property. The superintendent is the one that makes the decision on bringing to the board recommendations for expulsions. I can tell you, my process is, I typically don't know much about the students. for expulsions. I can tell you, my process is, I typically don't know much about the student. I read the facts of the investigation. I read the statements of witnesses and statements of the student, and then make my decision based on that. So, a lot of times, I don't even know what grade they are, or what school they're from, or demographic information about them. I base it strictly on the facts that are presented to me, and then we bring a recommendation to the school board. There on page 15, it talks about readmission conference, when the student is suspended or expelled. There's a conference with the administration and the student and the parent. One of the things that we included this year, and this came out of one of our meetings we had with the REA Leadership Group, or Exec Board, I think their official title is, they asked if a teacher, for example, find the teacher that referred the student that warranted an out-of-school suspension, or it happened in my classroom, that that teacher should probably be involved in a readmission conference, because there may be something that the teacher may have to do differently in order for that student to be successful in the classroom and not be sent out again for the same reason. So, there'll be in some situations where a teacher may be involved in that readmission. On page 16, we talk, list frequently asked questions. The first one talks about who they can contact, if they have a discipline issue, and that's off-lobby. And then, on the very beginning of the book, is his name and phone number and email address. So, that there. Then it talks, on number two, talks about the role of the police liaison, which basically, police liaison officer is to deter and address criminal activity on school property and at school-sponsored events and activities. Police liaison officers are not involved in determining student discipline, are not involved in addressing student misconduct that does not involve suspected criminal conduct. So, that information is in there. And then on page 18, the question was, do we have recommended resources? And then we do list some resources that are available to staff. And then from page 21 on to 28, all of the different definitions of the level-one and level-two behaviors that I mentioned earlier. And after working with the administrators on this, I really believe that since they were a part of this and we had conversations about these, we're going to be more consistent as far as this behavior is the same thing at every building. And so, that is something that we're looking forward to. Then on page 29, I just want to call your attention that there are specific guidelines for disciplined special education students. So, there's a chart there that explains that on page 29. And then on page 30, all the way to the end, almost, is policy 506, which is our discipline policy. And then the very last sheet, we are asking parents to sign off, and the students to sign off, that they've read the handbook. And then this will be collected by the building administrators. And then we've also provided some front and then back, where they can provide feedback on the handbook itself, if they have any recommendations for changes that we can, should consider for the following year. So, that's a real quick going through on the handbook.
What happened?
Well, we had that conversation, and we know we're going to have some, but we're going to put more than one time effort to try to get them to do that. We did talk about, they would have computers set up during parent-teachers conferences, so they could provide an easier opportunity for parents to, and then we even were looking at, can we go into Skyward where they can check, Mark, that they've read the handbook and hit the box that they've read it, and that would count as their signature?
There is, there is a disclaimer in here that says, "We further understand that our failure to return this acknowledgement does not excuse any individual for complying with the handbook or any RPS policies, regulations, and guidelines." But, but we want, we want our parents to really go through this, because it's very important.
I guess the question I have is, can we compel, I mean, we can on immunizations, can we on, on the discipline handbook compel compliance, you know, that they've, they've read it, they've signed it, and they've signed off on it? Can we compel that?
Um...
I'm not saying that one thing, I'm just raising, I'm raising the question, because...
If that's a battle that we wanted to choose, yeah, we could be, put a line in the sand that, I don't know what we would do to, you know, send your kid home until you've signed that or whatever. I don't know. But we, we have talked with adminis-
Because I can make an, if everybody's signed it, they've done their part, they've signed it, and they agreed to adhere to, they agreed to adhere to the, to the, to the, what's in here, to the handbook. And then, if they're doing that, that also puts an obligation on us to make sure that we administer in a way. I mean, it, it works both ways. I mean, compelling, the compelling requirement works both ways. I mean, we don't eliminate our duties, our responsibilities to, you know, to be accountable for what's in here. But I'm thinking if it just, if it, I'm just raising a question. I don't, I can't even answer this myself. I don't necessarily know that I would even support that, but I just raise it as a point of discussion. Is it something that we think we ought to consider? Maybe not for this year. Maybe, maybe it's something as we go on down the road, it's something we want to talk about next year, is something, we look at it as we do like immunizations. If you don't, if you haven't signed the book, your immunization's in the book, you don't come to school. I don't know. I'm just raising the question.
I mean, they can, they can sign it. I'm, I'm sure lots of parents have had the experience where their child brings home a sheet that they must sign, and there's reading material above it, and, "Mom, just sign it, just sign it. You don't need to read it, just sign it." "No, no, I need to read it." So, getting a signature on a piece of paper doesn't necessarily mean that they've actually, actually read it. I mean, I, you know.
Adults, adults.
We're assuming they're adults, and they're going to read it. Yes, Ms. Selinger.
Thanks. I, I don't believe that this is going to be that much of an issue. I believe that this is fairly common practice in our individual buildings right now. I know I've, I've had to sign off for going over some things with my student. I don't know if you have done the same, Mark. Yes.
I have.
So, so, it may be not on this big book. Parents have gone over with their children, but certainly, it's an expectation already that building, the particular buildings have some things that the parents want. They want parents and children to go over.
Mr. Barlow?
Couple of quick questions regarding the handbook. First of all, excellent job. And regardless of how we got to this point, it still is a job well done. I'm curious in terms of what we can potentially hope for, or the creation of this might result in. Should we anticipate potentially, now that the language, discipline language and practices has kind of been honed down to certain things, level-one, level-two, there should result in a more standard approach to discipline within the district, is I correct? And then, are we also potentially hopeful that the small amount of students who may account for the majority of, at least in the past, discipline referrals, are we hoping that that might be reduced, or will we anticipate any change in that level?
Yeah, I really think, for one thing, I think it's going to, the first part, it's going to make us more consistent. And really, I think it's going to, the data that we start collecting now is, to me, going to be more reflective, because as we were meeting with sites and found, I think I shared this example with you before, some schools, let's say, offenses were counted as majors, and some schools it wasn't. So, when you start making comparison of buildings, which we do, and our community does, the numbers really don't allow that. But being more consistent, I think is going to make the data more valuable. I think, I think the result of that, we believe, should have some impact on the overall how we deal with our students, and that's really our number-one objective. But it, it does, and it, and bottom line, it's going to be better for the kids, because this behavior is this across the district. It's not, in one building, you can do it, but they don't care. In another building, they get after you for it. So, the consistency, I think, is going to be important, not only for our data, but it's going to be consistent, it's going to be good for our kids, it's going to be good for our community. And I think because of that, it's going to have some impact on reducing the disparities and the numbers that we, we've been looking at here. Will this solve it by itself? No. I think this, along with the training that we're doing with the staff and, and the work that the board is doing with the Community Focus Team, I think all of that together is going to have an impact on how we discipline our kids and address the disparity that we've been focusing on. So, I think it's going to contribute, but I'm not putting all my eggs in this basket.
Mr. Smith?
Well, let's say, I'm glad it's done. I agree. I like, I think it will help lead to more standardization of how, how things are done, which is, which is a good thing. And I guess the only thing I'd say, you know, I would be interested just to know, just from, because I'm curious, as we go on, is, as we proceed down there, how many parents and students actually sign off? I mean, just to have that, just to know that in itself, I think, would be just good, kind of baseline data to know for this year. And then with everything else you're doing, you know, then you can just at least have that information. Maybe, maybe a big, not be a big deal one way or the other, if we actually sign. I think it actually would be, but I'm just curious what, if we get 90% or 10%, you know? And then when we have, when we have discipline data, and we cross back, and we cross reference that, we can look at that as a point, did they actually sign, did they actually sign? And we can know what percent of our incidents, or we actually have things, you know, what percent of them actually signed off on it. I think it'd be good to know at that point, just to inform future decisions that, and discussions that might take place on the subject. I don't, I'm not saying we should do anything now, but other than collecting data.
Yeah, we're going to, we had this conversation with leadership, and we're going to put as much effort as we can to, and try to provide a variety of opportunities for parents to sign off. I know as a, as a former principal, I know one as a middle school principal, it really shortened the arguments with parents and students. When you handed in the book and said, "Open up to page 12 and say, 'Here's what you did.'" And if they try to say, "Well, I didn't know about that," then I just opened up my file, and I pulled out a form where it shows they signed. I said, "This tells me you signed it. You knew it was in the book." So, yeah. So, it was helpful to me as administrator, because did we get 100%? We didn't get 100%, but I know we got pretty close to that.
Yeah.
Mr. Schluessner?
It's great to see that we are setting a basis now for collecting our data. Question I'd have is, do you have a plan of when you're going to start reporting it to the board?
Well, we, we made a commitment to the Native American Indian Parent Advisory Committee that we would bring data at the end of the first semester and the end of the second semester.
Perhaps just, at that time, at least, we could hear how many, how many signed off?
Yeah.
Which would be, of course, separate from the normal.
Right.
I think it's a good question that Director Smith has. I do know, one thing as a parent, it does serve me a little bit crazy to have to sign paper stuff every year. So, to hear that you have an electronic version is really helpful.
Director Marvin?
And as we look this, at this through the Equity lens, I'm, I'm really pleased that on the, inside the front cover, it tells parents and guardians that if you need this information in a different language, that it will be made available to you. And it says that in five different languages. So, I think that's really good. And also, as Mr. Munoz said, that on a sign-off sheet that the parents do, it also gives room for suggestions. If there are suggestions or questions about nondiscrimination, about fairness, that there's that opportunity for feedback. So, you know, whose voice are we missing? There's really room in here, I think, for that in particular. I'm impressed.
Quick point.
Thanks for the reminder. I just wanted to mention that we have it translated in six languages, and we'll make that available to schools that, that need those different languages.
Mr. Smith?
There is another question. Not only that means is what, how many languages that that's not, it's like, it's over 50?
Yeah, we, I think we have over 80 now. I mean, obviously, we, we don't have the capacity to do all of them, but we typically, when we do communications like this, we do the top six languages that we have. And then, if we have a family that's not one of those, we work with our bilinguals. And I know, we may even have to reach out to some individuals in the community to help us with, particularly families, because we don't have a, someone in our district.
I wasn't asking, like, we should, that we hate the whole thing in language, but I'm thinking, for, just for the notice, that if you do not, in their language, if we have 80-some language, whatever, if every language, if there's a statement in there, if you cannot really understand this, and they can see their language, or please contact us and arrange a time, you know, that we can, we can do, use the bilinguals, and find someone to help them understand. If they care that much, they read it, and they care that much, they really want to understand it, it seems like we could extend, you know, minimum, maybe just to let them know that, you know, hey, this is important, and if you can read that in their language, and you need to help translating it, contact us.
So, are you suggesting that you'd like the other 74 languages, statements listed in 74 of their languages?
I'm not specifying a number. I don't want to get, I don't want to go that far. I think I'd leave it to the, to the administration to figure out. But it's probably more, if it's five or six, it's probably 80% of the, you say 80% of the student body?
I'd ask you, because six languages cover what percentage of the student body? Is it 70% or is it 95%?
I don't know.
We're going to eliminate English from that, right?
Yeah, I just, I'm just saying, if we can get to the 95, of course, of course, we can get to 100, the better it is, actually. But I'm not suggesting that you do it, you do it necessarily.
Mr. Barlow?
And I know the Equity lens is new in terms of what we have on the back of our nameplates, but whose voices are we missing? So, even if we were to achieve 95, that would still suggest five. So, my question then is, how do we routinely communicate? And you mentioned the bilinguals. So, is that just part of, and could we potentially incorporate this into just that initial outreach?
Yeah, and they're really good at, they know which families need that additional help, and they, they make personal phone calls. We have found that that works better than sending, even sending something translated in their language home with them. They, it works better when our bilinguals make that phone call or person-to-person contact. So, they're well aware of families. Do they know, do we have a grasp on every family that may need that? I'm not going to say that we do, but I know they work extremely hard to be aware of that, and, and we rely on their expertise to help us make sure we make that contact with those families that may need that support to understand whatever communication that we are trying to make with them.
Thank you. 7.02, Approval of Adult Lunch Price for the 2017-18 School Year. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, I'm going to have Amy Icke, Executive Director of CUNY Ed, and SNS to tell us why we have to raise our adult prices.
So, this is a very quick item, I believe, because we don't have much choice on this item. The Department of Ed sends a letter around this time each year indicating the minimum price that we need to charge for adult meals through Student Nutrition Services. And we were a nickel shy of the minimum price. And so, we need to set that at at least $3.65. And so, that is our proposal.
Still a good deal. Can we, can we, I'll pay five. Can I come over?
Mr. Schluessner? Did you have a question? Oh, you had that look on your face. Anybody else?
I, I think, yeah, I think it might be helpful to move it, just so we have, if we would happen to have a parent come and eat with their child that very first day of school.
Move to action.
Second.
All those in favor of moving this item to action, please say aye.
Aye.
Any discussion, oh, we should discuss it first. Oh, well. It is now an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby set the cost of adult lunches at $3.65, beginning with the 2017-2018 school year. Move approval.
Say it.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned at 6:40 PM.